Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. The time is 5:32 PM. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the School Building Committee to order, and we'll start with a roll call. Mr. Avil couldn't be here today. Chairman Devon?
Yeah.
Superintendent Lee?
Yeah.
President Humes was unavailable. Mayor Kokoris?
Yeah.
Mr. Spelman?
Yeah.
Ms. Cicello?
Yeah.
I am here, and I will recognize Cyril Chafe, who's with us this evening, although I don't think technically still a member of the committee, but Mr. Chafe, thank you very much for being here this evening. Everybody should have had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, which was December 8th of 2021. Any comments or concerns with regards to those minutes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you. Chairman Devon, there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spelman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. So before we get to our discussion and update on South Middle School, I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize a couple members of the committee and those that have been integrally involved in the committee who are stepping away for one reason or another. The first is Cyril Chafe, who, as I mentioned, is here with us this evening. Mr. Chafe was appointed to the School Building Committee in October 2020 and truly stepped up, really contributing his knowledge and expertise in the area of construction as we closed out the East Middle School project and also went through the pre-construction project multiple times, I'll say, for the South Middle School project. Cyril came to us through the school committee, a committee on which he served two full terms, which is certainly a feat that should not go unrecognized and I think was recognized by the school committee at his last meeting. So I want to take this opportunity to present Mr. Chafe with a commendation that reads, "The Town of Braintree honors and celebrates Cyril Chafe. In recognition of serving as a member of the Braintree School Building Committee, be it known that the Town of Braintree hereby extends its great appreciation and gratitude for your dedication and hard work on behalf of our community. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Braintree, we thank you." And that is signed by the Mayor Kokoris and myself as chair of the School Building Committee. So Cyril, I said this to you last month, I felt like you came into my life a little too late, but I hope that you will stay active and continue to participate as we move forward with our new project at South. Mr. Mayor, did you want to say anything?
Well, Cyril, obviously you are always the voice of reason on all the boards that you serve, both boards, and appreciate all of your expertise and hard work in getting us through the East project and getting us going on the South project. Thank you for all of, all that you've done.
Thank you. And the next person I want to recognize, I don't think is here, but that is Mary Mahoney from Hill. As I think everybody got to know Mary over the last year or so, as we really ramped up and went through the pre-construction process for South Middle School. Mary was appointed as a senior project manager through Hill at the project's inception in 2018 and stuck with us at every turn. What folks may not know is that even though Mary had only been with Hill since March of 2018, she brought with her over 35 years of project manager experience to the project. And I'll tell you, Mary's history and experience, even though she's not here, was an incredible asset. As folks who have been following this project know, we hit several bumps. We hit bumps in the pre-qualification process, we hit bumps in the bid award process, and Mary and I spent a lot of time together defending our decisions and defending kind of the recommendations of this board and of our project management team with regards to contract awards, and we did that incredibly successfully, which is something we'll talk about later. And I believe that is due in part to the credibility that Mary Mahoney brought with her to the project, given her incredible experience. And while we are sad to lose her, we wish her all the best in her retirement, and we welcome Doug Murray, who you'll meet later, to the project. So the mayor and I also have a commendation for Mary that we'll pass along to her, but again, we just want to wish her all the best and thank her for all of her service and commitment to the Town of Braintree and specifically the South Middle School project. So then, moving on, we'll go right into South. We have a lot of great updates this evening, a lot of new faces that we want to introduce, and make sure we have enough time to answer any questions from folks that are here, folks that are watching from home. Big thank you to B-Cam for broadcasting our meeting this evening. The first item on the South update is construction bid opening project protest update. I feel like we've done a protest update at every meeting since we started this project, and that is because we face, in addition to litigation early on, three bid protests, either through the Attorney General's office or through the court system. The latest protest came in the form of a Superior Court complaint from Brayt Construction. As folks might recall, Brayt was our second low bidder for the general contractor to be awarded the South Middle School project. And what folks who aren't as familiar with the process may not know is this all happens in very short time and requires an all hands-on-deck situation, including, in this case, the help of Mary Mahoney and the team from Bacon Construction, who you'll meet tonight as well. So on Monday, December 20th, we received a copy of the complaint filed by Brayt Construction challenging, and I won't get into the details if anybody has questions, I appreciate it may not be as fascinating to others as it is to me, challenging the minority-owned and women-business-owned participation goals provided by Bacon in their submission. Two days later, Wednesday, the 22nd, a hearing was held via Zoom in Norfolk County Superior Court, where I had the pleasure of representing the town, we had counsel on behalf of Bacon Construction, and we had counsel on behalf of Brayt Construction. We had an extensive oral argument before the court that was supplemented by briefs submitted by all parties. Incredibly happy to share that within less than 24 hours, we heard back from the court, effectively authorizing us to move forward with the award to Bacon Construction and affirming that the process undertaken by the town in making the award to them as the low bidder was proper and lawful. So that was really great news from the court, allowed us to move forward and stay on schedule, which, as everybody knows, is tight, and in order to meet our fall of '23 opening date, it was imperative that we didn't lose any time as a result of litigation. So here we are, ready to announce and introduce this evening, the construction team from Bacon, our low bidder. We talked a little bit about their qualifications at our last meeting, and so for those of you who don't know or weren't able to join us, we have with us this evening owner of Bacon Construction, Steve Agostini, who's here. Our senior project manager for the project, Chad Hoxley, unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, but we do have our site superintendent, Don Mavor, also joining us tonight, and Joe McDonald, who will be the assistant project manager, was unable to join us as well. As I mentioned, this team brings an incredible amount of experience in public construction and specifically around successful school construction projects. I'm really excited to see them move forward successfully, quickly, and under budget, and looking forward to working with them and their team as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. We have Mike Carroll with us this evening from Hill, the owner's project manager, who's going to introduce the Hill team as well as the Miller-Dyer Spears team, and then we'll move forward with the presentation. So Mike, do you want to introduce the team, and then we'll take you to the stage?
Yeah, so the Hill team, like the home manager, I'm the project director on the project, I'm overseeing the Hill team, kind of overseeing the overall project. Mary was my senior project manager. She is no longer with us, and to replace Mary, we asked Doug Murray to come onboard, and Doug is new to Hill, but been in the business for quite some time, and we're really happy to have him onboard, and I think he's going to be a great asset to the team. In addition to Doug, we have Declan Long, and Declan, many people may recognize, he was on the East project as well. And about three or four months ago, we asked him to come on just because of his institutional knowledge and understanding of the town, as well as being a town resident, so we asked him to join the team, and we're happy to have him onboard as well. And then our designer, again, similar to East, is Miller-Dyer Spears, and to that end, we've got Brian Pace with us. Brian is going to be the lead during the construction administration phase, which is basically the construction phase. He's going to be working hand-in-hand with the contractor and with the OPM to review submittals and shop terms and RFIs and make sure that the design is carried out as originally intended and approved by the planning board and approved by the town.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm going to ask the committee to take seats in the first row. We're going to bring the projector down so that folks here, as well as folks at home, can view the presentation.
Okay, so before I get into the actual presentation, I just wanted to show everybody the agenda. This is what we've published. This next phase here is under the South Middle School, Section 4. We're going to do a general project overview. It's going to be information that, if you've seen the presentations before, it's probably looked very familiar. If you haven't, we wanted to just kind of set the table so everybody understood, you know, what we're going to be looking at, basically in the fall of '23 when we're opening up the school, want to show you kind of the finished product. We also wanted to talk a little bit about schedule, and when we get into that schedule section, I'm going to ask the team from Bacon to come up and talk a little bit about what we're going to see over the next 30 to 60 days, and then what are we going to see overall on the project. And then after that, we're going to talk a little bit about site logistics, specifically how the project could affect traffic flows around the school, people coming to and from the school, students walking to and from the school, things of that nature, and then talk a little bit, again, Bacon's going to talk specifically about the site and how we're going to manage that, and then we're going to have some, you know, that's going to basically lead us into next steps, and we'll open up for questions. So we're going to try and get through this reasonably quickly, but please, you know, think of your questions, and then we'll let everybody ask questions at the end if that works. So this is a rendering of the South Middle School as basically, as you're facing it in from Peach Street. So this is actually coming already in. This loop here where the cars are is a driveway that's coming up from Peach Street, and we'll see that in a minute. This is your main entrance under the canopy, and the main office is right along that perimeter there, right along that edge. And then we have the cafeteria with the kitchen, there's a media commons, and then we have kind of a backward C shape here, which is the academic wing, and that academic wing is for five and six and seven and eight. We have the two academies, we've kept that in mind as we've moved forward with this. And then towards the back of the site, this building back here, this part of the building is actually the gymnasium area and the physical education wing. Because of the height of that, it was put to the back of the site, and it was actually able to be recessed down a little bit, so that the building, even though it's a larger building, is masked appropriately for the site and for the neighborhood. We're not trying to put something in the neighborhood that just really stands out and kind of blends into the neighborhood with that. So this is the overall site as we're looking at it. So you've got Peach Street here, and then Liberty would be coming up this way here. This is Liberty right here, as you can see it. The existing building is right here with the parent drop-off loop, and then the parking lot, the existing parking lot. You don't see them on this, but the basketball courts would be here, and then the tenants' courts would have been out here. Those are both actually coming out during this construction process. One of the things that we're able to do by keeping the building in the back half of the site is to allow a long drive-up, drop-off loop, so that parents can come in, and we're trying to get that traffic off of Peach Street. We all know, if you're driving through there, that parent drop-off of pickup time, it can be problematic. So one of the big things here is by having this loop coming into the site, we're bringing everybody off of the, off of the public roads, and we're going to have a better flow. The other thing we're able to do is, this red line is showing the bus drop-off loop, so while we have parent drop-off loop and walkers coming out the front entrance, the alternate entrance, the physical education entrance here, the second main entrance, the bus students can come out there, and what that does is that allows us to have a separation of traffic, so the buses are in one location, and the walkers in the drop-off or in the other. We're still allowed to have a space here in the middle, which is about the size of a regulation soccer field, so that's able to be used as a soccer field off-hours. It's also able to be used during gym classes and things of that nature. One other thing that we've done is we've got a parking lot up here adjacent to the cafeteria, and we've got provisions there for hopscotch, foursquare, basketball, so that we have recess activities adjacent to the cafeteria. And then finally, we have the Links and Abels program, which is part of our special ed program, and there's a playground that's immediately adjacent to one of the main centers for that area, so that we have that access there. This is looking at the building from a higher view. Again, you can see the parent drop-off loop on the bottom here, you can see the bus drop-off loop on the top, and you can see the trees that are coming around here, how the building is kind of fitting into the site. There's a large, open-air courtyard in the middle of the building, very similar to what we have here at East. East, we have two courtyards because of the topography, we had an upper and a lower, but at South, we're having one. Another highlight here is these panels here, those are solar panels. This is showing the potential for all the solar panels that could be there. We're not putting quite all those on, under the base contract, but very similar to East, we're having about 30% of the building energy should be able to be developed through those solar panels, and we can be able to feed that, which helps to offset your electrical costs, especially in the summertime with air conditioning and things like that. So it's making it a very energy-efficient building. This building is going for lead silver, again, very similar to what we did here at East. This is a zoomed-in look at the parent drop-off, so again, this would be the drop-off loop here. This is the canopy that I mentioned in the first slide, so as people are being dropped off, there's a relatively short walk that's not covered, and then the rest of the walk is covered, so if people are in a wheelchair or if they're just carrying a lot of books, they're not getting wet as they're entering the building. Adjacent to that is the cafeteria. You can see we have a large glass area here, and we have a solar screen on it, so that's a south-facing classroom, it's going to get a lot of light, so you can have a lot of natural light, but we put the solar screen there again, so you're not getting too much, you're not getting as much glare. We also have shades in the space as well, if needed. Looking at the building from the back to the front, so this is the back half, and then as we go forward, so that parent drop-off loop would have been right here, and the bus drop-off loop would have been right in this area. This is the gymnasium area, so we've got a larger gym, which is about 8,500 square feet, and a smaller gym, which is about 6,000 square feet. Again, a very similar setup that we have here at East, so the larger gym can hold with extendable bleachers, about 300 to 400 people during an event. The smaller gym is more like 150 or so, but they're adjacent to each other, and it gives us the ability to separate the academies, but it also gives us the flexibility to use it not only during gym classes but off-hours, things of that nature. So having the two gyms there. In addition to the gyms, there's separate locker room spaces for the two academies, and we have the physical education teachers' office here. As you come down the corridor, there's a monumental stair that brings you up to the upper level, and there's also an elevator that services not only this level, but the next two levels up. So there's an elevator at that end of the building that will service accessibility throughout the building. So that would be in this area here that we were just looking at. Here's the, coming up that stair and the elevator, and basically along this area here is that backward C that I referred to earlier, that's the academic wing, and we've allowed the academic wing with various classrooms on either end. The Links and Abels program is down here on this lower level, and then we have the art and science classrooms in the middle, and that gives us a bit of flexibility. As grades may fluctuate with populations, we have the ability to adjust the classes and move back and forth. In addition to that area, we have the public areas. We have two maker spaces and the media commons, which many might call a library, but it's a media commons nowadays, and the maker spaces are adjacent to that, so as you're researching something, you can go into the maker spaces afterwards. We have the cafetorium, so there's a stage right here and the cafeteria here, and it can be set up as a cafeteria or an auditorium. That is a requirement from the MSBA. They don't typically fund auditoriums separately in a junior high school or a middle school. Here at East, we do have an auditorium, obviously you're sitting in it, but this was an existing auditorium that we renovated, so we were keeping within the MSBA guidelines there by doing a cafetorium. One other function that we've been able to do, if you notice, we have, the gymnasium is in one location, kind of an area that can be reasonably separated. You also have these other public areas that are right adjacent to the main entrance, so if we have evening functions, things of that nature, you can reasonably lock off the classrooms and still have functions and still use these buildings as a community building as much as a school building. So as we move to the upper level, the spaces that I was just talking about, the community spaces, are really multiple, you know, high ceilings in an auditorium, high ceilings in a cafeteria or a media common, so they don't have a second floor there. Your second floor really is that C wing, and replacing the main office in this area is the guidance offices. So again, we've got, we've got staff on both the lower level and the upper level to help manage the students, and so that they have an ability to get to somewhere relatively quickly. In addition to this elevator right here, which I mentioned goes all three floors, there's also a second elevator right here, which allows us to go from the first floor to the second floor, so that if you're at the main entrance, you don't have to go all the way to the back of the building to have that access to the elevator. And then finally, this is a general overview of the site, and this kind of yellowish-green area is what we're going to be occupying while the construction's going on. We have another version of this that I'll be showing up in a little bit, but this was, this is right out of the construction documents. The designers in Hill and the town worked to develop this, and now we've started working and tweaking it as we work with Bacon and get some ideas from them. So one thing I will say is everything we're showing you tonight is the plan as we sit right here, right now. It doesn't mean we can't look at these and continue to develop them, and if there's better ideas, if there's alternate ideas, we're going to be reviewing those. If we do have alternates, if we do have something that's going to be suggested, we have the ability to get it out to the community, just like we are doing tonight. The school department has the ability to reach out to parents, and Damon can send information home with students. We also have the mayor's office, and they can get information out. So we're definitely going to keep everybody informed, but we just wanted to explain where we are today and how we're moving forward. And one of the reasons why we want to talk about it is because tomorrow morning, we're, you know, weather permitting, I know it's going to be really cold out there, we're going to be hopefully starting to see the temp fence go in, and with that, maybe, Don or Steve, can you come up and just give us a little overview?
So we are starting tomorrow. Fence is coming. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, so our temp fence is starting tomorrow, erosion control later in the week. It's going to take all week to do that fence, so we can get adjusted, the school can get adjusted to it going up. I know the buses right now go in the back of the school, that's going to have to change real soon, but I will work on that with everybody. So temp fence this week and erosion control later in the week. Our survey is coming out tomorrow to start all the points on the property line and start staking it out. We have a pre-blast survey coming towards the end of the month, and that's going to take a little bit of a while before we can start, so that blasting of the ledge is all down by the gym area, and that'll happen sometime in February, early first week in February. And by, and we're going to leave all the overburden on, so there won't be any blasts flying all over the place, it'll all be covered well. And then by the end of the month, we should be, end of the month of February, we're starting foundations, starting to excavate for foundations. And we hope to have our structural steel here by May 1st. So it's already booked through the factory up in Quebec, we're getting steel May 1st, so we've got a lot of work to do with the foundation. We have two crews coming in, our own workforce as well as another contractor, so we'll all be heading towards each other, towards the middle of the building, come the 1st of April or so, we'll be starting to finish up. And hopefully have the building tight by next winter. It should be, should not be a problem, we have everything in line for that. And we're going to be turning over the parking lot on the east side of the site by the end of the summer, so that you can have that open again and open access to Kenmore Road by the 1st of the spring. And then by the end of next June, we should have the building all ready to go and turn over, and then we'll redo the front area around the existing school. So everything should be wrapped up by the summer of '23. All right?
And then after, after the contractor finishes substantial completion, there's always punch lists, things of that nature, but we also have FFNE, which is furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, that's going to be coming in, and we're going to be moving staff from the current South Middle School to the new Middle School, and also from Liberty and Highlands to the school as well. So that's going to happen over that last summertime. So taking a look at the overall project here, again, here's the existing school. This here is Peach Street here, and then we've got Liberty coming up here, and then Moreland and Celia. I know a lot of people that live in this neighborhood, the kids might walk to school and they might come up and through Celia. So that's one thing that we want to point out, is that once the construction goes in, this highlighted area that's in this yellowish-green is basically the area that's going to be within the construction fence. So once that happens, you're not going to be able to walk down Celia and come to the building. You're going to have to proceed down around Moreland and come in this way. Very similarly, right now, we're looking to put construction fence up around the perimeter here as well, so if you're coming from, say, the Liberty School or the Neyland Street area, we're going to make a recommendation that you come down and stay on Liberty Street, and you come down Peach, and you come in. Currently, there is a crossing guard right here that will allow from Card Court or from Moreland coming down Peach Street that way, and as you're coming down Liberty, there's also a crossing guard right there at the corner of Liberty and Peach, so we feel that that is going to allow the pedestrian access in here. Student drop-off is going to be on the bus loop. As you can see, the back half of the parking lot here is taken under construction. Part of the reason for that is that there's a large underground water storage area there, an infiltration system that goes basically right in this area here, adjacent to the parking lot. There is also some utilities coming out onto Neyland. Is it gas line or?
No, no, it's all sewer, drainage, water.
And a fire alarm?
Fire alarm, electric and telephone, and everything but gas.
So some utilities that will be coming out and down Neyland, we're probably going to be trying to meet with the Neyland residents in the near future to have a deeper discussion on that, but that realistically, we're looking at waiting through the winter, and then once we get into the better weather, we'll have that discussion. I said Neyland, didn't I? Sorry, Kenmore. Sorry, Kenmore, not Neyland. Another project I have is on Neyland Street. So, all right, so Kenmore Street, sorry about that. So this is a drawing, we can come back to this if there's questions, but I'm sure this is one that is really affecting people the most, and we wanted to make it clear how we're going to be able to navigate around the site and manage that. The last part of the presentation I have here is a zoom in here. Now, just to fit it on the page a little bit better, we've rotated this, so Peach has been on the bottom most of the time, now Peach is on the side here, and we would have Liberty coming up here in Kenmore, and the drop-off loop would be here, and the existing school would be there. So, Don, if you can just talk a little bit more, we don't have to get into all the details here, we're going to make this information available so people can take a look at it, but we just want to let people know that, you know, there's been a lot of thought gone into this, and the design team had thoughts, and now Bacon is working on it and expanding that, and really thinking out how to make this project successful and minimizing the impacts.
Yes, we're staying in the parameters that they designed. It's all workable. All of our construction traffic is coming in from Peach Street, as you can see down here in the corner, and our trailers, my trailer, my project manager's trailer, and the OPM trailer are right there, right near the entrance, so you can always have access to see what's going on, because it's real busy there, as we know, for drop-off and pickup in the afternoon. So the trailers are there, it's all truck traffic coming in that gate, it's all stone with rip wraps, so there's no mud getting out in the street, and that'll be constantly policed to make sure that we're not mudding up the streets, but there'll be a big truck wash in that area. And again, the whole area is fully fenced, and everywhere in the beige color is our temporary roadways to get around. roadways to get around the site. So, we'll have contractor parking coming in and on the left, and then we'll have access around the, the whole building footprint, you see outlined there on the lower left. And there's existing tennis courts we can use for a lay-down area right now, and to the left of the tennis courts, we'll have our soil stockpile there, loom, and that'll all be double erosion control around it, so that it's not getting into that wetlands. And then we'll even put a temporary basin there to catch all any rainwater washing off the site, so we can sift it through and get it clean. And you can see in the blue, that's some of our lay-down areas for the early phases, for the foundations. And what else? Over by the basketball court, you can see where the fence line is, there's, as Mike said, there's a big infiltration system there, we're going to be doing right away in the spring, and that'll be done, and that'll be all repaved by the end of the summer, so reopened up.
And that driveway?
That driveway right there at Kenmore, yeah. It's going to be real busy for us to do the underground utilities, but we hope to do it in one big block of time for one month, and probably in May, May or June, right around that time.
And then we're going to be pulling this fence back a little bit, right?
Yeah, and the fence all comes back for the next phase, which is at the end of August, third week in August.
So, basically, but when students come back in September, this fence line will be pulled back, the parking lot will be paved probably to a binder course, not to a finish course, but that'll allow the buses to have access back, similar to what they have currently. So, that was a key component, again, trying to minimize the impact to the town and minimize the impact to the school, but still giving the contractors sufficient time to get their work done. The only other thing I want to point out is that the fence is pretty much going around this entire perimeter that we talked about. There is an adjustment to the fence there. In addition to the fence, there's erosion control, so that's hay bales, silt fence, hay wattles, things of that nature. That's all to prevent erosion and also to prevent storm water runoff. We know we have some neighbors, especially down on this side of the, the site, on the southern side of the site, that had a lot of concern on that, and we're making sure we address that, so that we don't cause any issues to our neighbors, we want to be good neighbors. All right, with that, Nicole, or if, if people would like to have questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and who'd like to start off?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mike and Don and Steve. So, if anybody has any questions, we ask that you come up to the microphone, please, just to make sure that we capture the audio for folks that are watching from home.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Devon from the school committee. I've got a couple of questions, and they're sort of like how we're going to, shall we say, interact with the neighborhood. One of the things that I found troubling about this project was, shall we say, securing the work site during certain hours. The fact that we had comes and goings, and there was no real, shall we say, start time and, and, and end time to the day. And I thought that was problematic, even on the weekends. So, I'd like to know what you're going to do as far as, you know, starting hours and making sure, obviously, people have lives, and they're going to, some can leave lunchtime and things like that, but making sure that we have your group coming in, doing your work, and then leaving. That's my first question. Second one will be about water mitigation on the site. I mean, what's going into making sure that if we do have some, you know, we're taking quite a bit of raw land that takes quite a bit of water, and when paving it and whatnot. I'm wondering what the plans are to mitigate water potential issues for the neighbors. Those are my only two questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Starting with the water mitigation and the storm water. We do have that pond in the back, upper left corner, right there, we intend to use, but only if we need to. Hopefully, the water is going to dissipate into the ground more than rushing off the site. But we will have that area as a temporary basin, and it'll be all filtered, so when the water that comes out of that is going to be clean and into the system, so it'll be completely clean. And of course, all the catch basins around the site are going to have silt sacks in them, and that'll be constantly maintained. And as for the hours, we, we have a strict time, time, time that we cannot be coming in or out of the site, and that's between 7:20 to 8, 8:05, I think it was, yeah. But we have signs coming for that, so our contractors know they cannot access the site for that half hour in the morning and the half hour in the afternoon, and we're going to hold that strict. So, we can all work from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, that's going to be the standard time, and we shouldn't have to change that much at all. Once the building's enclosed, they might be inside doing quiet work at 6:00 AM to 2:00, but they all, they'll all know they cannot leave the site during those times. So, we have it all covered, and we've been through this before in other projects, so we know how to run it. You know, sometimes the subcontractors don't like it, but they'll have to just get used to it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Just to elaborate a little bit on that, the, the time that Don mentioned, there's a specific times in the morning and in the afternoon that the contractor's not allowed to have traffic coming in and out of the site, that's deliveries or anything, and those times correspond to the parent drop-off in the morning and the parent pickup in the afternoon. So, we're trying to be conscious of that. Obviously, we, the contractor still needs to be able to get deliveries, so we're limiting it to about a 30-minute window in the morning and a 30-minute window in the afternoon, but we are having basically a moratorium on any construction deliveries or, or, or coming and going during those time periods.
How you doing? Mark Delazio, 24 Kenmore Road, I live directly about the project. We spoke before, Michael. Curious about the impacts during the utilities on Kenmore Road, and what is that access going to look like for the months of May and June that you mentioned?
So, I think we want to have a more in-depth discussion, probably with the people that it's specifically affecting, but the current plan is there's going to be a gate at Kenmore, and that's going to allow them to access Kenmore from that side. So, in the evening, materials, things of that nature would be brought back into the site, you know, so you're not having, you know, catch basins sitting out on the street or anything like that before they're installed. But there is going to be utilities going in, in that area, and it would be typically, I'll say, very similar to what you saw in Liberty maybe over the summer, where there's construction during the day, if we need to have police details or things of that nature, we could. At the night, a trench would either be backfilled or properly plated, so that you have access. And again, we're going to be good neighbors as we get closer to that, we're going to have deeper discussions, let you know where we're at, how we're moving down the line, and my team is going to be on site, like Don mentioned, our trailer's right here, his trailer's there. I will give you my cellphone and my, my, I have a guy, Ed Pizzullo, who's going to be full-time on site, as well as Duckland and Doug, and we'll be there to make sure that, you know, I can't say there's going to be no inconvenience, we're going to minimize that inconvenience and try and be as quick and as efficient as we can.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Communications is definitely going to be huge for that. I do have a handicapped sister-in-law that lives with us that, you know, we need medical services from time to time, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when, if and when that work starts. And then lastly, for me, any subcontractors awarded for the project, concrete, drywall, anything of that nature?
So, the filed sub bids have all been awarded. As far as the contracts, I'll defer to Steve and Don, I'm sure they're, they've got many of them. I know Pompeo is going to be the site contractor and...
Concrete, we're going to do about half-bid, L and L. Bylaws, property and... Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jim Moriarty, I'm on Richard Road, one of the director butters. One of the things that concerns me, kind of glossed over it, is this blasting survey, and what's the liability on the company? I mean, that's, that could be heavy-duty blasting affecting homes there. I mean, these are older homes, and we haven't been told really much about it, to be honest with you, the residents on the road. So, how is that going to impact those homes, and if there is a problem, what's the liability on it? That would be one question. Other question I have for the mayor concerning the cost overruns on this project. As you know, we're in a very high inflation cycle right now, you know, 40-year-high on the CPI. Can we guarantee that there's not going to be cost overruns on this project, and we won't be going back to the taxpayer on this? So, those are my two questions.
Maybe I'll start with the cost overrun and ask the mayor to jump in as well, but right now, we have a, a plan with the MSBA, and we have a funding agreement in place, and Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just say, thank you for the question. When we originally bid the project, it was in the area of 69 million. It was an accelerated amount that was presented to us, a higher cost due to some of the timeframe gaps that we had, et cetera. When the actual numbers came in, they came in below the original amount, so we are under the original budgeted amount at this point. So, we've actually, two things have happened. One, when the project was originally discussed and the town was about to borrow money, before we did a debt exclusion, the interest rates were about 3.5%. When the debt exclusion passed and we borrowed money for this project, the amount of interest was just under 2%, it was like 197, and we were able to go to 25 years. So, first of all, we saved money on the interest rate, and we lessened the term. In addition to that, we are well below the original amount budgeted for this project.
So, if I can just maybe elaborate a touch more on that, we're, we're in very good position right now, because we're under budget, you know, starting off the project. You have a very good design team, Millidary Spears, you have Hill International as your owner's project manager, and you have Bacon Construction as your construction manager. So, between the three of us, it's our job to continue to make sure that we give a quality project, but also deliver it on time and on budget. So, we're, we're making that commitment to you, that, you know, Hill and Millidary Spears will be working with the construction team, that, you know, there's going to be change orders, there's going to be unforeseen, there's going to be things that come up, but we have a contingency set aside for that, and we feel that we're well on track to being on budget or potentially even under budget, but definitely on budget. Specific to your other question on the pre-blast survey, so the expectation, and let me just flip, well, the expectation is this lower level here where the gymnasium is, that's set down about one story lower than the rest of the building. So, in that transition there, we expect we may hit some ledge there. We've done some initial soil borings and test pits out there, and we, we know where we think we hit ledge, but sometimes you hit an outcropping at one spot, and two feet to the left, it could be 10 feet down or it could be 10 feet up. So, until we get out there and actually know where it is, we don't know exactly what it is, but we do expect that there's going to be some, some ledge that has to be removed. Now, we, we had some discussions early on with the design team before the contractor even got on board, and, you know, the question is, do you use a hole rim or do you blast? And the hole rim tends to be more expensive, but it's actually a lot more intrusive on the neighbors. It's louder, you have that bam 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 going, you know, eight hours a day for, you know, weeks at a time, and the drilling during the blasting, they drill it, they preset it up. The blast itself, with the overburden, Don mentioned overburden, so we're not taking the dirt off and scraping it down and, and having this all exposed, it's all going to be properly matted if needed or overburdened on it, and when the blast occurs, you may not even notice it if you don't hear the horn go off. You know, there's going to be a, a safety feature where a horn goes off before the blast, and, and all those processes and procedures are going to be followed. We're certainly going to let the neighbors know, we're going to let the school know, and we're going to try and do that. Right now, we're talking about trying to see if we could do it over the vacation period. It, it's in that realm of possibility, I can't guarantee it until we get out there and kind of see where we're at, but there is a pre-blast survey, it's to inspect everything to make sure, you know, there, what damage is there, what damage is not there, so that we can do an evaluation afterwards. But we, you know, Don, correct, we don't expect any damage, any, yeah, so, don't expect it, but there's contingencies and insurances if there was an issue.
So, we just, we have about 15 minutes left, I want to make sure that everybody that has questions gets an opportunity to speak.
Hello, my name's John Lawrence, I live on 42 Portland Road, which would be on the left side of this map by where the wetlands was, and I know it was brought up earlier, but I just want to touch base a little more. I want to know what sort of drainage is being implemented for the project, because that area behind our houses there does have pooling and running water that is borderline a nuisance as it is. I just want to make sure that there's at least something in place where the residents who are along that street don't have to worry about more water coming out of there and potentially overflowing into yards and properties. And then, my second question is, in between 42 Portland Road and 30 Portland Road, is a plot of land owned by the town of Braintree. I was just wondering if anything has been brought up about making that a potential access road or a path to the school. Thank you.
So, specific to the first question, I think Don touched, touched base a little bit during the construction about the, the means and methods that he's going to use to make sure during construction, we don't have drainage issues. That includes the hay bales, the silt fence, that includes a settling pond and, and looking at other things. In this area here, which is basically, this is the, the current tennis courts, if I pulled up the drawings for the drainage, there's a large drainage system going in here, and then he actually has it identified here, there's a large drainage system going in here. So, the, the state typically requires us to try and keep all the drainage on-site, but then it can overflow into the town, storm water system, which is exactly what we've designed here. This has been reviewed in, not only by the planning department, but also by an independent third-party reviewer to kind of validate that the calculations and the, the expectations our design team had were correct, and, and the third-party reviewer came back and confirmed that the drainage is designed properly to support the drainage of the entire site.
Thank you.
And then, as far as the land goes, I don't know, I'd probably have to look into that, and, and we, we can certainly get back to you if you want. Maybe at the end, I'll give you my card and you can, and I'll get your contact information, we can get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Meredith Berica, the District Five Town Councilor, thanks for having everyone here tonight, this is really exciting. I have a few questions, residents sent in who couldn't make it here, I'm hoping you can answer for us. The first is, is there a pest management control plan, and is it publicly available?
It uses multi-pest, so it's...
Okay. And when it's avail, and it will be available for residents to see? Okay, great, thank you. And then, with the increase in truck activity, is there any additional plans for speeding or any kind of traffic control plan along Peach and Liberty Street in particular? It doesn't sound like there's going to be truck traffic going off of, in the, to the neighborhoods behind Liberty School.
So, I think right now, the plan, the school started with the understanding the project was moving forward by having crossing guards both at this location, which is where the crosswalk is, as well as a crossing guard up here. Specific to construction traffic, there'll be signs and indications of entries and, and, you know, no, no construction traffic, say, coming in to the parking lot here or into the drive-up loop, directing them all towards this, this, this location. But right now, if there's work in, in Kenmore, we talked about potentially having police details, things of that nature, but I think that's one of those things, as, as things progress and as we move forward, we'll have to continue to evaluate, but that, that's the plan right now.
Okay, just with the increase of walking students, especially going up Liberty, which is already super busy, as is Peach, I hope we can continue to evaluate that with the construction vehicles, the, the heavy increase in construction vehicles that are going to be taking place on those roads.
The other part of that is that we are trying to do a moratorium, or we have a moratorium in there for the construction deliveries during that peak period where most of the students are walking. So, we, we have a 30-minute window at the beginning of the day and the end of the day where the truck traffic should be reduced, because we, we took that into account.
Thank you. And the last thing, I know we just talked about Portland Road, do we expect any, any impacts to Amherst Road, which also backs up to the property, from either drainage, construction, blasting?
I, I don't think you'd have any impact there, they might be part of the pre-blast survey, depending on exactly where they are in their adjacency to the property, but that's not, not anything that the, the neighbors would notice or anything like that.
Okay, and residents will be notified before the blasting begins, any blasting begins?
Yes, there's going to be pre-blast survey, and we would have an announcement, and we'd be sending out information to the neighbors.
Excellent, looking forward to seeing it get off the ground, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the team while they're here? So, I just want to remind folks, and for those watching at home, if you think of a question or you didn't feel comfortable asking the question this evening, my office is always open, and taub@braintreema.gov. I know the project team from Hill is available, and if we don't know the answer, we will certainly direct it to the appropriate place, so please don't hesitate to call or email, we'll make sure that you get the information that you're looking for. But if there are no more questions this evening, I think we will raise the screen, I'll ask the committee to take its seat, so that we can wrap up the final items on our agenda for this evening. Thank you. Thank you. the agenda. Hopefully, we covered all of those questions during the prior period. But like I said, if anybody has any questions about the South project, or any of our other school-related projects, please don't hesitate to reach out or join us at a future meeting. Speaking of future meetings, looking at the calendar, I'm going to suggest Monday, February 7th, at 5:30 for the next meeting of the school building committee. Appreciating that there's greater interest, perhaps now than there is during other times of the year, with the active construction project upon us, I'm going to hold on identifying the location, because I do think it's helpful to have B-CAM and the team, thank you very much, to everybody broadcasting, so that those who can't join us have an opportunity to watch the meeting. So I'm going to hold on location, because we are somewhat limited in where we can hold a meeting in order to have it broadcast, but if Monday, February 7th works for the committee, we'll go ahead and ask folks to hold that date for 5:30 PM. Location to be determined. And that brings us to the close of the agenda, so if there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Devon. There's been a motion, is there a second? Thank you Superintendent Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
...is to reorganize the school committee. So with that, I call a motion to open up the meeting of the Braintree School Committee.
So moved, sir.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, and we need a roll call vote. So all the members, speak your name and...
Tom Devon, aye.
Carla Saros, aye.
Kelly Cabalmeier, aye.
Anthony Tuffey, aye.
If, of course, aye.
Mrs. Pugh, aye.
Matt Lynch, aye.
Okay, all members are present. Prior to the reorganization, I would like to give the former chairman a few moments to make some comments.
Wow, okay, let's keep this really short. No one wants to hear me anymore. I'm bored with my own voice. But I will say this, to the members that came off, thank you very much. To the new elected members, thank you very much. It's not easy putting your name up here to do a job, and we're not doing it for the paycheck, because we haven't gotten one in many years. We never will. Part of our service is the fact that we do, we are a volunteer organization. So with that being said, I think it does take courage, it does take, shall we say, courage to keep, shall we say, and state your own, how you feel about certain things, about how we will educate the people of Braintree, the children, excuse me. Let their parents know how we're going to do that, and spend the money as judicious as we possibly can. I think it's encouraging to sit in this beautiful auditorium at East Junior High School. And some years back, it didn't look quite as beautiful, although I don't know about red, but that's just me. My favorite color is still corduroy. And we look at past, the previous meeting, that we now know who will be building our South Middle School project. And we have viable milestones in some of the things that are going to take that middle school and make it the same as this one, thereby affording the same educational opportunity to both sides of town. And then, at some point in time, we will champion the high school, and Godspeed on that one. But to the people of Braintree, thank you very much for letting me serve you. I still serve you, as just a regular member, I get some of my life back. To administration, Superintendent Lee, thank you very much. And the other administrators that keep us, the tires on the road, so to speak, thank you very much. And all the other people that do yeoman's work behind the scenes, the mayor's office, inspectional services, public health, and it just goes on, inspectional services, and some of the other groups that help make Braintree a wonderful town. Well, that's it for me.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
As the chair. Okay, Section 810 of the Braintree Charter requires the school committee to reorganize, to elect a chairperson and a vice-chairperson in January of each numbered, even-numbered year. The charter also requires the town clerk to preside over the reorganization of the school committee, and immediately after a chairperson is elected and has administered the oath of office through their new leadership position, to turn the meeting over to the chairperson, whereby the chairperson will then preside over the election of the vice-chairperson and the recording secretary. But with that, it looks like you're surprised at it, so we'll modify the charter, and I'll handle those two duties for you. The nomination process for the chairperson, vice-chairperson, and the recording secretary will be conducted following these rules. To nominate a candidate, you must raise your hand. First hand raised will be recognized. Voting will be conducted after nominations have been closed. Nominees will be presented for voting in the order nominated. For nominees to receive a majority of the aye votes of members voting, shall be declared the chairperson, vice-chairperson, or recording secretary, as the case may be. With that, a motion to open up the nominations is in order.
So moved, Mr. Casey.
We have a second. Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Okay, we do have the nominations open, a unanimous vote. So with that, is there a member of the school committee who would like to make a nomination?
Mr. Clerk, if I may.
I see Mr. Devon's hands raised.
At this time, I would like to nominate Lisi Heager as our chairperson.
Ms. Heager, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations to come forward? Seeing none, a motion to close nomination is in order.
So moved, sir.
Okay, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Okay, seeing that there is only one candidate in for nomination, I will accept a motion for acclamation for the nomination of Ms. Heager as the school committee member chairperson.
So moved, Mr. Clerk.
Second. Okay, on a roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Oh, congratulations, in order. Moving on, is that we're opening up the nominations for vice-chairperson. On a motion, please?
On a motion.
Open nominations for vice-chairperson. We have a motion, we have a second, again, roll call.
Aye.
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 We have a unanimous vote for the opening of the nomination for chairperson. Does a member would like to make a nomination for vice-chairperson?
Mr. Clerk.
We have, I can't read the, Saros.
I'd like to nominate Kelly Cabalmeier.
Okay, Ms. Lemay, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
You do. There's another member who'd like to make a nomination. Mr. Devon?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Saros.
Ms. Saros, do you accept the nomination?
No.
You accept the nomination. Is there another candidate, another member want to make a nomination? Seeing none, a motion to close nominations would be in order.
So moved, Mr. Clerk.
Second, by Ms. Heager. On a roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Aye.
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 And a motion of 6-0-1 abstentions, we have closed the nomination process. Okay, for the first candidate for nomination was Ms. Cabalmeier. All in favor for Ms. Cabalmeier, please say aye, and raise your hand, so I can do a count. One, two, three, one, two, three, four. The other ways, four? Five, okay, we have a five. Okay, with that, there's a five-to-vote. So the nomination of Ms. Lemay is, Cabalmeier is in order, and she has been duly elected as the chairperson of the Braintree School Committee. There's no need to go into the second candidate. So with that, congratulations to Ms. Lemay.
Thank you.
The next item for the, on the agenda would be for the motion to open up the nomination process for the recording secretary. On a roll, we have a motion and a second?
So moved, Mr. Clerk.
Second.
Okay, motion second, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote to reopen up the nominations, okay? Does a member would like to make a nomination for recording school?
Yes, Mr. Clerk, if I may, Ms. Saros, if she's willing to serve.
Ms. Saros, do you accept?
I accept.
Does any other member like to make a nomination? Seeing none, a motion to close the nomination process will be in order.
So moved, Mr. Clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Okay, seeing that there is only one candidate in nomination for recording secretary, so a motion to accept by acclamation the nomination of school commander Saros as the recording secretary would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all, now, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Great. That does it. Congratulations to all. And at this time, I need the three candidates, the three new elected individuals for their leadership positions to stand, so I can swear you all in. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Carla Saros.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties and responsibilities incumbent upon me by my election as... State your position.
Recording secretary.
Chair. Recording secretary of the Braintree School Committee, in accordance with the bylaws and ordinances of the town of Braintree, and the general laws of the common law. So help me God. Well, congratulations. At this time, I turn the meeting over to the new chairperson, Ms. Heager.
I'm going to let go of you.
What are you going to do with it?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee for their confidence in appointing the chair. Congratulations to Ms. Cabalmeier and Ms. Saros on their new positions as well. Congratulations to Ms. Lynch and to Ms. Tuffy, welcome to the school committee. Congratulations on being elected back in November. Everyone brings a unique perspective and their own talents and individual strengths to the committee, which makes us all a better committee, so I welcome all of your opinions and perspectives and strengths and talents. I've worked alongside Mr. Devon for eight years, he is our most senior member of the ten years.
Good God!
And we were both elected together in 2012, so the hope to working with you again is together.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
I also want to thank him, and Ms. Cabalmeier, and Ms. Saros, and of course, Ms. Tuffy, on all the work you've done over the last two years. No one could have imagined what the world is going to be like in the last two years, so I really do appreciate all your time and effort over the last two years. I'm excited to work with all of you, and there is much work to be done to support teaching and learning, and keeping our students safe in the classroom. So as you may know, the mask mandate in the schools was extended today by the DESE until February 28th. Students, staff, and all visitors are required to be masked in our schools. I don't think any of us likes this mask mandate. No one wants to be wearing masks. However, it is a mandate, and all members of the school committee should and must comply with that mandate. So as a result, we need to figure out how we're going to hold school community meetings in the future. So I'll be reaching out to each committee member for input in the coming weeks, whether or not we go fully remote, or whether we meet in another town building to not have a mask mandate. We will, we will all discuss that again over the coming, over the coming weeks. So with that, I am going to ask for two motions. The first motion is to request to table the remainder of tonight's agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
To our next school committee meeting on January 24th. Location to be determined.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Cabalmeier. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And my second motion will be to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved, the adjournment, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cabalmeier. Again, the remainder of tonight's agenda will be continued on January 24th, 22nd. With that, with that, I need a roll call vote to go into, to go into, I mean, excuse me, to adjourn. With that, Mr. Devon?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cabalmeier? Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Make a chorus. Mr. Lynch? And the chair of all side, we are adjourned.